Well, it's certainly good to see all of you. And I look forward to the day, hopefully soon, that we'll be able to meet in person. And by golly, it is really good to see you, Richard. It's a breath of fresh air. You're muted.
I could hear him. We're all right.
Yeah, we're all good. We're here.
Good. All right. Our first item of business tonight is approval of the minutes of the village board meeting of May 14th. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as they were presented?
Move approved, Mayor.
There, we have a motion from... Who made that motion?
Second, Miller.
I did.
Motion by Jensen, second by Miller. Thank you. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Gust. Trustee Jensen.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson. Trustee Wells.
Right, motion carries. Next, we have the warrant list. We have bills presented for payments, the amount of $97,502 and four pennies. We have a motion to approve.
I'll move.
I'll take the motion from trustee Gust.
Second, Johnson.
Did I hear a second? Second from...
You did, from me. This guy.
I'm just gonna make it up.
Make it up. Go ahead.
Any discussion on the bills?
No.
There being none? Would we, clerk, please call the roll?
Trustee Jensen.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
And trustee Gust.
Motion carries. We have no items under special business tonight. Next would be public comment on any agenda items. If any of the members of the public would like to speak, please identify yourselves and state your case. All right, we'll have another opportunity at the end of the agenda. Mayor's report. Don't really have anything specific tonight. We will have some interesting comments coming up here, so move on to trustee reports. First up is trustee Gust. Have you got anything for us, sir?
That's gonna be it for me.
All right. Moving on then to trustee Jensen.
Mayor, only one item, and that is our next finance committee meeting is going to be June 17th, 6:00 PM, virtually meeting. Oh, and also, I just want to put a plug in for our administrator and finance director and staff. They're doing a bang-up job of trying to guess at what the impact of this pandemic is gonna be on our finances. And it's really a moving target. It's almost as hard to predict as the surge and the flattening of the curve and all that stuff. But they're trying real hard to get a handle on where this thing's gonna head and what impact it'll have on our finances. And that will come clearer as time goes on, of course.
I'll echo that sentiment. Thank you. Next up, we have trustee Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one thing, I'd like to extend appreciation to the Our Lady of Humility Knights of Columbus. They did a cleanup of North Avenue recently, and some of you might have noticed the orange bags that were laying along the right-of-ways of North Avenue. And even in these kind of questionable times, when a lot of people wouldn't want to have anything to do with picking up trash and garbage, and, you know, who knows what's been done with it prior to it landing in our ditches? But, you know, these people are, they're just charitable and they're giving, and we greatly appreciate, you know, their time and efforts. So I just want to make sure that everybody hears that. They're still out there for us, and we're glad of it. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Trustee Anderson.
I just wanted to mention, I don't know if anybody noticed or not, but we've had a little bit of rain lately. I believe I've heard told that it's the wettest May in the history of the earth. Or at least until, since they've been keeping track. But I just wanna let everybody know that we appreciate the Public Works Crew. They've been working strange hours and shifts, and they've been staying on top of things, and I appreciate the work that they're doing. Also, as Don kind of alluded to earlier, in case anybody hadn't noticed, my morning and evening commute have been extremely disrupted by Wadsworth Road being closed. So that's a DOT, Lake County DOT project. They're forecasting 15 days. I'm hoping that they're forecasting 15 because they think they'll have it done in nine, but no one's ever mad when you get done early. So I'm sure those improvements were needed, and looking forward to that being done and traffic flow back to normal.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. All right, trustee Sidik is not in the meeting today, so we'll move on to trustee Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have no report.
Okay. Thank you, Larry. Any report from our administrator?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to let everybody know that we're gonna be bringing staff back for... Bringing all the employees back to the office beginning Monday. We have all the distancing requirements and things of that nature. We're still gonna keep Village Hall secured, open for appointment. However, if it is necessary for people to visit, paying water bills for cash, for example, we have protocols in place, but we won't allow people in until they're escorted by somebody with staff, have to wear masks. You know, we have disinfecting machines, and Adrian and Public Works have set up sneeze guards on both those windows, so if somebody does come in, we're all ready for it. So Phase Three is starting. It's gonna be interesting, and I'm sure everything will work out. I think we're all prepared. All the department heads, Peggy and Adrian, have reviewed all our requirements, and we feel all set. So that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. We have a couple items on our consent agenda tonight. First, we have our finance report, April of 2020. We also have the public safety report of the same timeframe. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? A motion by trustee Gust?
Second, Miller.
Second by trustee Miller. Any discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Jensen.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Next, we have a series of resolutions and one ordinance. We'll start off with trustee Anderson. It looks like you've got the both of them, so we'll let you have it.
Okay, everybody, I invite you to get comfortable. It's gonna take a while. Now, the first one that we have to consider, resolution authorizing granting of a temporary easement to IDOT. This is in relation to the next big traffic disrupting project that we are experiencing in town, possibly happening in the year 2021 or 2022, you never know. When Sheridan Road is gonna be shut down for the giant culverts under the road for the Bull Creek to be replaced. They have requested that we grant them a temporary easement on a small piece of land, and they're offering to compensate us for using that land in a total of $350, which is great. I'm sure Don is thrilled in the Finance Committee with that one. Like I said, it's a temporary easement. It will just be because there'll be equipment there and maybe some materials and parts while it's taking place, and when the job is done and landscaped, that property will revert, you know, back to the village normally. So I will make a motion to approve resolution authorizing granting a temporary easement to Illinois Department of Transportation.
We have a motion by trustee Anderson, second by trustee Miller. Any discussion? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Wells. Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Jensen.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. What is that resolution number?
15.
Mary Jo? 15?
I think Mary Jo might be in danger. We saw a large creature.
Yeah.
It was about to jump at you, so...
Yeah.
I hope they're okay.
She may be back, so...
Okay, the next one is a resolution regarding pavement management plan. An agreement between the Village and the Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. This, they've approached us and offered this service to us. They will be sending out consultants and staff from CMAP doing pavement condition studies. And this should go along well with the study that the village staff completed a year or so ago, where we rate the condition of the streets, and this is the program that we use to determine which roads get resurfaced every year. So this will be, in addition to that, they'll be looking at making recommendations for things like crack sealing and curb and gutter work, or drainage, you know, whatever they see necessary. They'll be putting in the form of a report. They'll be working with the village staff in the meantime. This is no cost to us. It's a service from the Metropolitan, Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning. So I will make a motion that we approve a resolution authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding for a pavement management plan between Beach Park and Chicago Metropolitan Agency for Planning.
Second, Miller.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Anderson, second by trustee Miller. Discussion? The price is right.
Price is great.
Sir, I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
First one, under MOU between MAP and the Village Beach Park dated April 17th of 2020, number four on the project management review. Second, bullet point, it says if major deviations or changes in scope or schedule occur, or if applicants request them, CMAP may discontinue the project. I just wondered, is there a timetable that they would give notice if that were to be?
Do we have input from staff on...
Mark is muted.
Thank you. No, there's no specific timeframe delineated on that. The reason that it's there, you know, in the past, things have just been, in the event that you do want to discontinue the project for whatever reason, that either you're not satisfied with the way things are going or that the data's not there, you're not giving them what they need, they're not giving us what we need. You know, it's just a clause for getting out of the work to be done, so... No timeframe associated, however.
Okay. Number two on the pavement data collection. Said the consultant will document pavement conditions for all roads under the local agency's jurisdiction following the ASTM D6433 standards with a 100% sample rate. I might assume that all of our roads operating under that, following the ASTM D6433 standard?
I believe that's a testing standard, not necessarily a paving standard. Is that correct?
Yes, ASTM is only a testing standard.
Right.
Adrian, did... I think we have a comment from our Public Works Director, Adrian.
Thank you, Mayor. It's just one way of measuring the conditions of the road. There are different standards to do so, and this is one way that they do it. So in speaking with our engineer, the standards that they would be providing is something that they're familiar with.
Well, my question was just making sure, again, that 100% our roads would be covered by this this plan there. It says that if they meet no standards, I'm just wondering if those standards would be applicable whereby most, all of our residential roads would be addressed under this proposal?
Correct. Yes, all of our roads would fall under this category.
Okay.
And again, to test them, or they're going to evaluate all of them? No?
Yes, they will. Yes.
100% evaluation, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, with the clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Wells. Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Jensen.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. That is Resolution 16.
Okay, the next one, it's another example of one of the ways that our village staff saves money. This is something that we participated in last year, related to painting of our fire hydrants to maintain the integrity of our infrastructure. But the way that we save money doing this, it's one of the categories that is offered through the Lake County Municipal League Cooperative Purchasing Program. What that means is instead of us going, soliciting bids for doing a few hundred hydrants, Lake County Municipal League puts out the request for people to bid on work, and there's probably eight or nine communities that are all gonna be under this bid. So that lowers the price because of the economy of scale. They announced to us early this year, when we let them know that we were interested in sandblasting and painting the remainder of our hydrants, that they were gonna extend the contract to the contractor, which is called Go Painters, Incorporated, the same ones that were used last year. We had good luck with them. They were successful. They offered to honor the same price that they charged last year, so there's no increase in fees. And we are going to, we have budgeted $30,000 for this expense. We're coming in at $31,000 for this contract, but that means we're getting more hydrants done. We're gonna get all of the remaining hydrants done instead of a section of them, and then having to complete the project on the third year. So I guess I will make a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Go Painters, Inc. for 2020 fire hydrant, sandblasting, and painting program in an amount not to exceed $31,000.
Second, Miller.
Trustee Anderson, second by trustee Miller. Discussion? All right, they did do a good job, and as I was driving down Green Bay Road, I started thinking, I wonder when we're gonna paint hydrants? I got my packet. There it is. All right, any other discussion on this? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Jensen.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. That is Resolution 17.
Okay, the next one on the list is related to pond management or pond maintenance. The village has, oh, where's the number, 15 retention ponds. 12 of them are in the Cambridge Heatherstone subdivision. The money for the ponds in the Heatherstone subdivision comes from Special Service Area 6, which was established in the subdivision, was established. The homeowners out there annually contribute money into the special service area for the maintenance of common areas, which includes the retention ponds. So the other ponds, the other three, we have one at the Public Works facility, and then we have two at our Founder's Park. We, it was interesting that, we talked about this at a Public Works Committee meeting. The discussion was to go with the company we've been using because they were offering to honor the same price they've been charging us for the last four years. But we decided collectively that it would be a good idea to put it out to bid to some other companies just to see. Yes, we're happy with the price they're offering, but it's possible that someone could offer a better price. So Adrian sent out a request for proposals to, I believe it was four other companies that do similar work. And as it turns out, the one that we were already dealing with for the last few years is the only company that submitted a bid. So we're back into the same boat, using them. Again, like I said, we're happy that they're honoring the same price they've been charging for the last several years. So I will make a motion that we accept a resolution authorizing execution of a proposal from Return to Native from Salem, Wisconsin, for the Pond Maintenance Program in the Cambridge subdivision and village-owned properties. And the dollar amount for the 2020 program is $16,152.
All right, we have a motion by trustee Anderson.
Second, Miller.
Second by trustee Miller. Discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I see we budgeted actually $15.5 for the pond maintenance, and that's not a big difference, but I'm wondering, did we think it was gonna come in lower for some reason? Most of the time, stuff just goes up in price.
I don't, possibly we were thinking we were gonna get some lower bids by soliciting bids from four other companies, but that didn't work out.
Yeah.
I'm just guessing. I don't know for sure that's why.
Yeah, I mean, especially since it's the same price for the last couple of years, it's hard to say what can go down.
That's an excellent question. So in the last three or four years when we used this vendor, it all really depended on on the conditions of the ponds. When they initially came in, not much had been done to the ponds, and so the cost of that was unknown. As they've continued to treat the ponds, also depending on the weather, prices have gone up or down depending on each year. So we've never gone out to bid. We have basically allowed the vendor to just do the work under the previous administrator. It was under his spending authority, so there was no issue with that. But as we do have a new administrator and we have policies that we need to follow, it was in our best interest to make sure that we are getting the appropriate bidding for this type of work. And so going forward, we'll be a little bit more conscious as to the cost of these types of services and budgeting appropriately, so...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? All right, clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Jensen.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. That is Resolution number 18. All right, next up, we have trustee Jensen.
Welcome to the intermission in the Mark Ottersman Show. I do have one item tonight. I'd like to offer a motion to adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 3.10, Title III, the Village Beach Park Illinois Village Code by modifying the annual fee schedule. And just by a brief description, this, we review, the staff reviews this annually with the goal of keeping our fees as low as possible while still covering our costs and apportioning the cost to those that drive it. So if you wanna build a house, you pay your fee, of course, and the rest of the village residents don't cover the cost of that. Licenses for businesses, all that sort of thing. Those were all reviewed, and we went over any changes in the Finance Committee, and they're all explained to our mutual satisfaction. One of those, for instance, is the water rate, which has gone up to just pass through the increase that's imposed on us by what key and from whom we buy it. And so that is my motion and explanation.
Great, we have a motion by trustee Jensen.
Second, Miller.
Second by trustee Miller. Discussion? Okay. The clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Anderson.
Hi.
Trustee Wells. Trustee Gust. Trustee Jensen.
Hi.
Motion carries. And what ordinance is that?
13.
Ordinance number 13. Very good. Okay, back to the trustee Anderson show. We have a little unfinished business that he wanted to bring forward.
Yeah, I, like Don said, sometimes the need for a brief break between the interesting items for something that's not so interesting. So I do appreciate the way that this was laid out, so there was a break for our viewing public. The last item that I'll be bringing forward tonight is kind of an interesting one. We did a project along Sheridan Road a couple of years ago. A path in extension of a sanitary sewer system. The paving contractor on that path, it was a general contractor, I believe was Joel Kennedy Construction, if I'm not mistaken, but their subcontractor for paving was Chicagoland Paving. And when they went to ask for their final payment on this project, they provided us with the required documents that go along with a payment application that allow us to make that payment. So this has carried on for quite a while. I believe there's actually been some liquidated damages assessed towards this final amount because of the delay. But just recently, they decided they wanted to get final payment for their pavement. So the paperwork now is in order. The village engineer and the village staff both are in agreement that this should be closed out. So I will make a motion to approve payment to Chicagoland Paving, for application number three, final, for the Sheridan Road recreational path extension, the amount of $24,735 in 12 cents.
Second, Miller.
A motion by trustee Anderson and a second by trustee Miller. Any discussion on this topic?
Yeah, I just have a question. Is it ever appropriate to tell a creditor or, you know, someone that the village owes money to that, like, you have until such and such a time to submit your bill, or we're not gonna pay you?
I'm glad I don't know. That really depends on, yeah, I'm sorry, Mark. Go ahead.
No, go ahead. Your explanation, I'm sure, will be better.
Yeah, what I was gonna say, trustee Miller, that really depends on the contract language. Typically, you know, the language defines how payment will be requested and under what conditions it will be made. If, you know, we really can't add a condition to the contract that's not in there, like you're suggesting, that if you don't pay us by, or get us the information by X date, we won't pay you unless the contract says that originally. I would not take that position.
Okay. I mean, I guess it's just, we have to keep carrying that money on the books indefinitely.
Yep.
Well, they give us more.
We're another one in that same situation on Beach Road still, right?
Well, that's true.
It's even older, right?
They are earning a lot, so much interest, though, you know, right, Peggy?
You're already here, Jennifer, so...
Yeah. And their final payout is actually $2,780 less than it normally would have been if this delay, you know, didn't happen. So it is what it is. It may be considered in the future, if we seem to have a pattern of these projects that the contractors don't want to close out, maybe a clause could be added in the future. I'm not sure how that would go to projects that use motor fuel tax money. The state is a little particular about additional things that you add or outside of the norm, so we would have to look at that. But if that's something you want to pursue, we could look at that for future projects, possibly.
Okay.
And I think, I think our attorneys would agree that no matter how many words you put in a... And I think, I think our attorneys would agree that no matter how many, how many words you put in a contract, there's always something you couldn't imagine was gonna come out of it. This is certainly one of those.
That's correct.
Who would imagine that we'd have to beg somebody to pay?
I know.
We, we made more money on liquidated damages than we did on that interest, I think.
Right.
Yeah, oh, for sure.
Good question.
Very good, so we have a motion hanging out there, I believe. Am I correct, clerk?
Right, trustee Addison, and then a second by trustee Miller.
All right, then let's go ahead and call the roll.
Trustee Addison.
Hi.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
All right, motion carries. Well, then, on to new business. We have nothing on the agenda. Does anyone have any new business for this group?
I'd like to share something with the group. We had our first police chase in our neighborhood the other night. Now that Woodsworth Road is closed, they have to chase them through my neighborhood, which is interesting. I didn't hear it slip through it, but I guess it was pretty dramatic. Tires falling off and driving on the rims and sparks and the whole deal. But that was the first.
The interesting details I heard about that one was after they lost the tire, they were riding on the rims, and the police were actually several minutes behind them, following the grooves in the pavement to get, and they followed them right into Waukegan that way, so.
I weren't looking for those grooves. I was, I went to the grocery store and I couldn't find them.
I, I did this.
On North Avenue, where we put that overlay, you'd see it, but I, I didn't spot it.
And maybe it was just on the curves.
Ah, maybe. Yeah, they, I, I was wondering how they lost them, that, that you don't, can't go too fast with, with no tires in your car. And the other item, I don't wanna steal the manager's thunder, but I understand, or the administrator's thunder, but I understand that he has some good news for us regarding the spring cleanup.
You're muted, sir. Unmute yourself again. The man with the mute button.
That's correct, yes, the mailer will be going out. If it hasn't been sent out already by advance, they scheduled the spring cleanup for the last two weekends in June. The first weekend is west of Lewis, correct me if I'm wrong, and the second weekend is east side. And the shredding event will also be done during, which one is that, the first? On the 27th, on the second, second weekend, so.
Yeah. Well, I, if, if others are like me, they're locked up in their house with nothing else to do but house clean. And so I think it'll be a very productive spring cleaning.
Adrian's gotta take all the credit for that, though. He's the one that was pushing in advance to schedule those dates, so it's, thank you, Adrian.
Very good.
Yeah, there'll be a lot of happy residents when they hear that.
Fewer phone calls.
Social media is, there's been a buzz on the social media outlets about, hey, when's that gonna happen? Is it canceled? Rumors going back and forth, so it'll be nice to finally put a pin in it.
Yep, agreed. Any other new business for?
I just wondered, did we ever get our issues with the village hall sign taken care of? Mark, I, I know you said there was some kind of problem with it.
Well, well, the sign is, has been fixed, but they've made some changes that we're not a hundred percent familiar yet. And since staff hasn't been here all the time, we haven't run it through its paces yet. You know, we've been running, we've been running a half schedule, and so a lot of time when it's spent at village hall is done actually doing the administrative work. Tracy's the one that really handles the sign. She's got most of the expertise, along with Adrian, but they're not here all the time. And when they are, their duties are filled with other items to take care of. So hopefully, when we open up, we'll start running the signs.
Okay, I, I mean, I'm asking a lot, lines of having the spring cleanup info put up there.
Yeah, absolutely, all that information, things of that nature, yes.
Okay, great, thank you.
Speaking of technology, how's our sound system coming along? Since we're gonna be coming back to have regular meetings eventually.
Yeah, I, I got to see a little bit of it tonight on the video side. It's quite amazing, actually, the, the monitors in the closet are, boy, it's better than my TV, I'll tell you that much, so.
Who's gonna sit in the closet and watch them?
Yeah, I might wanna consider a, a little makeup for the shiny spots or whatever it might be, but, you know, that part looks great, and we're, we're still waiting to get our final training on everything to make sure that we can adequately handle it. So it's, it's here, it's installed, and we just need to know a little bit more about it. So it should be coming up pretty quick.
Right, I hope we'll be able to hear the staff get rid of stupid popping little microphones they use over there.
Yeah, we got a couple of the, the handheld mics that will be used over on the staff table, so they'll pass them back and forth, but yeah, that'll, that'll make life a lot, a lot easier.
Right.
Are we gonna be able to project the meetings on the sign out front on Woodsworth Road?
That'll be.
We don't need any more traffic jams out there.
Or accidents.
Accidents, maybe.
But it will be on the big screens here, so you'll be up in, in the marquee here, so.
Oh, wow, oh, boy. That is makeup.
Larger-than-life. And then, if you're, if you're creative, you might wanna consider bringing cookies or something for whoever it is that's gonna be running the cameras, 'cause they can, they can zoom in and out, too, so.
Oh.
They're not robotic, they're not, they're not robotic cameras.
No. All right, we'll move on then to item 13, which is citizens addressing the board. Anyone that wish to address the board upon any or all topics, please just let us know who you are and state your case, and make sure if you wanna speak that you're unmuted at the time that you speak. Anyone? Everyone? All right. We have no cause tonight for an executive session, and I think we're down to that last item.
Mayor, would, would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
I certainly would.
Well, then, I'll offer that motion, sir.
Hold, hold that thought, stop.
Bob Johnson's got his hand raised, I don't know if that's on purpose, or.
Bob Johnson, did you have something to say to the board? If you're speaking, we can't hear you, and you are unmuted. Oh, boy, technology.
And maybe it was just a.
Well, we did see a raised hand. All right, well, we do have a motion to adjourn at this point. Do we have a second?
Yes.
Second by trustee Gust. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Wells.
Hi.
Trustee Gust.
Hi.
Trustee Johnson.
Hi.
Trustee Miller.
Hi.
Trustee Addison.
We are adjourned.